Previously posted and noticed pursuant to Louisiana law. Nicole, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Sterns.
Here.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Dampf.
Here.
Ms. Aguilera.
Here.
Mr. Arminter. Ms. Arrington. Mr. Blossman.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Mallett.
Here.
Mr. Morris.
Here.
Mr. Morrow. Mr. Temple.
Here.
Ms. Werner.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Woods.
Here.
Mr. Woods. Mr. Zuschla.
Mr. Chairman, there's a call.
Thank you, Nicole. Today, I'm pleased to welcome Michelle Lally, a graduate student in physics, to deliver both the invocation and the pledge and share a little bit about herself and her scholarship. Ms. Lally?
Let us all go before the Lord. Please reverence and honor as you wish. We thank you, Lord, for this time. We thank you for your faithfulness. We thank you for your leadership. We thank you for your lordship. We ask that you bless those leaders here with righteous judgments. And we thank you that we are here in service to the Louisiana State University Agricultural and Mechanical College. We ask, Father, that you do not forsake the prayers of those who pray for those who cannot pray for themselves. We thank you for watching out for all stakeholders on the campus of this university. And we ask for an added blessing, of course, to our leaders where that leadership trickles down through the university. We'd like to say thank you and amen. Please stand as I recite the pledge and honor as you will. Shall I go ahead? Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Lally.
Thank you.
Please welcome you here to the meeting of the LSU Board of Supervisors. And we'd like to hear from you about your person and your scholarship.
Sure. Thank you. So first of all, I thank you Chairman Sterns. Thank you President Tate. Thank you past Chair Dampf. Thank you all the supervisors, all the guests. I'm Michelle Lally. I'm a fourth-year Ph.D. candidate in the Quantum Photonics Group in the Department of Physics and Astronomy. I study all of the buzzy things that are going on right now, so quantum computing, high-dimensional quantum communication, all the things that are keeping nation governments up at night. That's the research that I do. So for keeping our government security secret safe, for keeping our warfighters safe on the ground with advanced technology, for keeping autonomous vehicles safe in the air, for being able to send signals through turbulence and have them arrive at their destination with full fidelity. This is the research that I look into. My specific area is quantum communication, quantum cryptography, to be precise. And so this is basically making sure that our vested interests stay secure and out of the hands of bad actors. We always talk about Alice sending a message to Bob and the eavesdropper or Eve. So I work to make sure that Eve cannot access our information and any information that she is able to access actually does not lead her to use that information that way. So that is what I do. I am also a proud graduate of the Clark Atlanta University, historically black college in Atlanta, Georgia. I'm also a graduate of Rose Toman Institute of Technology, where I obtained my BS in physics. Clark Atlanta was a BA in finance. So I got bored with finance, moved to physics. Most people go the other way. But I found a paper on Beam Me Up Scotty, and I thought that people could quantum teleport themselves one day. I was disappointed when that was not the case. But we are able to quantum teleport information. And so one thing I'll leave you with is it's very pertinent research. We already have individuals. Some of you may have seen the podcast that I deal with the president. I wish you could have heard some of the information shared before the recording, which is the fact that people right now are actually hoarding information that's encrypted such that when quantum computers come online, they'll already have the information and they'll have the access to decrypt it. So quantum communicate, quantum cryptography, shall I say, is a way that actually can break certain encryption protocols, most of all, which is RSA, which is the encryption that a lot of, a lot of institutions use to secure their information. So the most popular and the most secure is AES 256 encryption, which I think people are kind of coming online with now. But I just want to put that in heads and minds because this is active research that is going on right now. Some people think it's a lifetime. It's not going to take a lifetime away. This is research that is in the near decades. So with that, I'll open it up for questions. I thank you if you have any. I thank you all for your time and for letting me tell you a little bit about some of the research going on in the Department of Physics and Astronomy.
Thank you, Doctor. I'm Ms. Lally.
Almost. Almost. It has a nice ring to it, though.
I understand that you're...
March 28th.
March the 28th, you'll receive your Ph.D.
Say again. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
March the 28th, you'll receive your Ph.D.
Yes, March 28th. I defend. I defend at 11:00 a.m. I'll send the Zoom link. Everyone's invited.
Best of luck to you. We're very proud and we expect great things.
Thank you.
President, give a comment?
Yes. One comment. First of all, I think it's important to note in public, I have interacted with many scientists over the course of my 40-plus years working in higher education, and I have found none who I've examined to be finer than Ms. Lally. She represents the very best of physics, science, and she represents also in this moment, which I will talk about at another time, our modern Sputnik moment, one of the most important type of individuals we should be preparing for what we're dealing with right now on the world stage. There is... Her character as well as her commitment to this country and the scientific background that she brings is stellar. And I wanted to say that to you in a public format. For those who have not seen, she was interviewed on Par with the President podcast. And I encourage anyone who is working with elementary or high school or college students who aspire to add value to this country to watch that podcast. If you're not motivated after that, I can't really help you. There's something wrong with you because what she has done, going from physics, pardon me, from finance to physics, the commitment to intellectual curiosity is what we're really... This is the only reason I even tolerate jobs like this, to be quite frank. Because these are the people who we're investing in, who are going to make this country great in every form or fashion and keep us great. And I just really appreciate everything you're doing.
I have one question to the third hour.
Mr. Temple, please, please address your comments to the chair.
Oh, Mr. Sir, sir, Chair. I have, I have a question I'd like to ask.
Supervisor Temple?
Thank you, sir. So, so ma'am, three-pronged question. Where'd you go to high school? What was your ACT score? And why'd you come to LSU? I got a fourth part. Will you stay in Louisiana?
She should not stay in Louisiana.
I'm just asking.
She needs to go to DC and save this country.
I'm just asking. I'm just asking, Mr. President and Mr. Chairman. I'm just asking.
And, and, and FERPA will allow her to choose not to disclose her ACT score if she...
It's okay. She, she, I'm curious. I mean, it's amazing.
No, there's nothing wrong with curiosity. I'm a scientist, so...
Sure, sure.
There you go. So first and foremost, I probably could have led with that. I'm from a small town called Southfield, Michigan. It's just north of Detroit in Michigan. I went to Mercy High School, which is in Farmington Hills, Michigan. And I'm actually very excited that you asked the ACT question because I got a 23 on my ACT. Nowhere near a 30.
That's amazing.
So, yeah, so it was not an easy battle going from finance to physics, but my perseverance and my passion for the field and the necessity that we need to pay, that we need to give to certain technologies, especially because, you know, there is a good technology, but there are always bad actors, right? So that I always, if you will allow, I always like to give the Malcolm quote from Jurassic Park that we were so busy trying to see if we could that we didn't stop to think that we should. So these are the things that we need to think about with technology. To your next question, I came to LSU because the quantum information research here is unmatched. People like to throw up the big names of, you know, some of the eastern institutions, some of the western institutions that are known for technology. And I don't think people know that there is a gem in the quantum science and the quantum photonics group and the Department of Physics and Astronomy, as well as other fields in the Department of Physics and Astronomy, the College of Science in general, they're doing amazing research. So for quantum, I looked up a particular advisor, John Dowling. Unfortunately, in memoriam, you know, we lost him in 2020. But I couldn't believe this was in the heart with this wonderful weather and bayou country, go Tigers, and I would absolutely be able to come down here. Will I stay? Unfortunately, no. There are no quantum companies in Louisiana. So maybe one day my friends and I will, will start one. But right now, there are no quantum companies in Louisiana. A lot of that effort is concentrated. As President Tate said, I'm on the East Coast and in Silicon Valley. So hopefully, we can change that in the future.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Supervisor Dampf?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. He kind of stole my question at some point about staying in Louisiana because we need you. But there are a bunch of us on this board, a few lawyers in the group that are probably liberal arts folks, and I just want to tell you that the things you talk about it don't exist in my side of, that side of my brain. And I'm just so impressed and it's just really, really great to hear from you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you. It's an honor to be here. Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you, Ms. Lally. Does any other supervisor have any question? Thank you very much for being here. And like I said, we expect great things and I'm good to have you here with us. Come back when you're doctor so we can refer to you.
Absolutely. Thank you all again. Go Tigers.
Thank you. We have no one registered for public comment. And I would remind the supervisors that it is in order to address all comments to the chair to be recognized. And when we go into committee meetings, that means the chair of the committees. So at this time, I'm going to recess the board meeting and we're going to convene committee meetings. Without objection, Ms. Werner, Supervisor Werner, would you convene the Research and Ag Extension Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Griffith, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Werner.
Here.
Ms. Arrington. Ms. Aguilera.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Morris.
Here.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Temple.
Here.
Adam, chairs and floor.
Thank you. Today, we don't have any actionable business, but we do have a very important and timely presentation that I'm going to ask Dr. Stephen Nelson to come forward to give. As you all know, and I know you've seen, and many of us were there about two weeks ago, we celebrated the largest philanthropic gift ever in LSU history. And there's a key component of something that has been worked on for several administrations and several board iterations that we are now, I think, seeing we have, we have good traction. And so Dr. Nelson's going to bring us the update on the NCI designation and where we are and where we are going. I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you. Can I first object to having to follow that student in terms of her presentation and credentials?
I didn't write it down. Sorry about that.
It's funny how everybody talks about the complexity of medical science, but, you know, quantum physics, it's another level. So President Tate, Chairman, Mr. Sterns, and Mr. James Motors of the board, Chair asked me to sort of give a brief overview of what is NCI designation and why is that important to LSU and to Louisiana? So I'm not really going to go into any particulars about that at this point. I told Mr. Sterns that perhaps later on, we could go into more details about the structure and how we plan to work together, but this is meant to be an overview. So if there are specific questions, I'll be happy to answer them. So first of all, what is NCI designation? So National Cancer Institute designation is something that is really a bit elusive to everybody, and we're going to talk about that in specific. It really has to do with foremost, research. And why is this important to LSU and Louisiana? So this NCI-designated center started in 1971. It was part of the National Cancer Act of 1971. And the idea is for these centers to provide the highest level of care and research in the, in the country and really designed to develop what is the next cure. And as you heard the president say the other day in his State of the Union address, he wants to decrease the mortality rate for cancer in this country by 50% in the next 25 years, which is really a very aspirational goal. So NCI designation is awarded to a cancer center that demonstrate leadership in addressing the nation's cancer burden through research. And the reason research is italicized is that's the basic fundamental here. So while it was great that we worked out this relationship through President Tate's ability, together with the foundation, to get that commitment from the hospital system, it's really the institution, the academic institution, that gets the grant. It's all about research, research in cancer. The reason it's critically important to have a partner, a clinical partner, is because many of the benefits in terms of the economic benefits goes to the hospital partner because patients seek their care at NCI-designated cancer centers because they feel and believe that that's where the best care is. And then there's also a sort of afterglow effect in terms of the best in cancer, they're probably good in cardiology, neurology, respiratory medicine, and the like. And so the hospital is really the financial benefactor of being associated with an NCI-designated cancer research center like LSU. So that's part of the reason why LCMC made that commitment. And part of that commitment is to help fund the research that goes on at that institution because while everybody talks about research grants and NIH grants, which are critically important, many people don't realize for every dollar you get from the NIH, it costs the institution somewhere between 35 and 55 cents because no grant pays for itself in terms of all the other things that are required, from research equipments to space and equipment. Now, the designation that you apply for, and we hope to be in a position to apply for this within the next five to seven years, I think that's realistic, not overly optimistic, is you apply for this and you get a grant for five years, and then you can renew the grant. The point to remember about this grant is not only voluminous in terms of paper, is that they also have what's called a site visit. And based on the grants that I've had in the past, I can tell you these site visits are very rigorous. So what happens is 12 to 15 scientists from around the country will come and visit your institution and spend a day to a day and a half, and they want to see that if everything you put in paper is actually functional and operational at the institution. Now, you can go in for what's called a renewal after your initial five years. And the reason this is important is, as you know, there's been lots of debate about whether or not we could apply for this NCI designation as a first step as a consortium. That means a group of institutions working together. Well, the NIH has said now in their guidelines for the past several years that you cannot apply as a consortium. The reason for that is what the NIH is concerned about, much as you are in your operations, is governance. Who has control? Who can hire? Who can fire? Who can move budgets? Who can do that? So there has to be clear autonomy in terms of control. Now, you can imagine, when you think about LSU, Tulane, Ochsner, all the other different components here, in terms of working together and agree on that would be quite difficult, especially for the initial application. Now, what they said is that you can apply as a consortium or bring consortium partners in when you go for your renewal in the next five years. And that's something that we were planning to build because we want this cancer center to be the Louisiana Cancer Center, to serve all of the state. So why do we need a cancer center? It's shown on this map. So there's 71 designated cancer centers today in the United States. The ones in blue are called the comprehensive center. That's the, the highest number. You can have a basic research, a clinical center, and then a comprehensive center. That's the highest goal. The nearest comprehensive centers to New Orleans is MD Anderson or UAB. And if you look at this map, you can see there isn't one in Louisiana, there isn't one in Arkansas, and there isn't one in Mississippi. I can tell you that my relations with, with those other institutions in those states that they also won an NCI-designated cancer center. So it's a little bit of a race. I think we're actually in a much better position than they are. Now, what are some of the features of an NCI-designated cancer center? Again, grant-based research. Research is the foundation, and you have to have a certain amount of research grants that qualify to actually even apply. That number has changed recently. It's somewhere around at least $10 billion a year. If you ask me where LSU is today at the Health Science Center, New Orleans, we're about six to seven. But we would like to maybe double that. We want to be on the high side of that threshold. You provide state-of-the-art care, clinical trials, and they have to be innovative clinical trials. So you can enroll people in other trials, but what they want you to do is have your physician-scientist design your own unique trials called Phase One trials. You're also supposed to have a training and mentoring program so you bring the next generation of cancer researchers into being, hopefully in Louisiana. You're also very important that you have to address the cancer-related problems where this institute is. So our theme would be health disparities since, as you've heard many, many times over the years, Louisiana is rich in health disparities. And you have to show that you're making an impact in terms of decreasing those health disparities. And then a very critical, important point is they want to understand that there is an ongoing financial commitment to this, to this endeavor. That's usually going to be a combination of state, federal, philanthropy, and then grants. So why is it important for Louisiana? Many of you have heard this before. We have very high cancer risk behaviors in terms of cancer incidence, obesity, cigarette smoking, everything you can imagine. We're either 49th or 50th overall in our rankings, fifth in the United States for cancer deaths. Both blacks and whites have very poor outcomes in cancer. Actually, black females have the worst of all the groups. We have health disparities that result from these determinants of health, environmental factors, access, reality, race, ethnicity, all the things you can think of. And a significant number of our patients in Louisiana go to Texas and to Alabama for their care. Last time I looked at this was a couple of years ago. It was close to 8,000 patients leave our state to go for their cancer care, and I think that's something that none of us should be proud of. So what is the value of having an NCI-designated center to LSU? One is that you have a community impact. Shows what is, and many times when I go before the legislature, they want to know, what is LSU doing for me, for us, for our patients? Well, we're decreasing cancer risk, incidence, outcomes, and things like that. We're training a workforce, the next generation of people who are going to take care of both you and me. Research, we've become more competitive for grants, especially these very competitive grants, once you get into this higher echelon of, of grants, of sort of funded institutions. Quality and prestige, this would put LSU on the map nationally. Even though I know there are many things that we do very, very well, this would really elevate our institution really almost transformationally. Philanthropy, it's been shown that once you become an NCI-designated cancer center, your philanthropy increases somewhere between five to tenfold because of grateful patients. Clinical care, we can improve time to diagnosis, everything else, and then the economic value in terms of bringing added dollars. So just briefly, what will we need to be or what would we need to do to be, you know, a strong applicant? We have to have a strong institutional commitment. So let me say that President Tate, both when he interviewed for the position and many times since then, has put this as one of his highest priorities. So that's a very important message to the NCI. The director that will lead this effort is, has to be a national figure, have strong credentials, been shown that they could do this, have grants and the like, and be recognized for their leadership. Now, they, before, as I said, in terms of having authority and governance, they have to control the budget and what happens. So they have to be able to move dollars from one place to another, hire, fire, everything else, so they have complete autonomy. We also, the people that you recruit into the system have to be recognized leaders as well. Many of those we have right now, but we're going to need to recruit more. And we have to have a certain level of mid-level investigators because those are the ones who train and educate the next generation, and we have to have a clear vision. So some of the characteristics of those cancer centers that have been funded, say, in the past 10 years, I just listed a few of them. They've collaborative projects. We have solid funding. We do transdisciplinary research. That is, we bring people in for different disciplines to work together because many times, those are the creative, really true things that happen, is when you have people with different points of view to tackle a problem. Again, we have to have an impact in terms of cancer in our immediate area, and we have the state-of-the-art care, so of course. So let me just finish up. So these are three of the most recent cancer centers that have been funded to talk about the type of commitment we're talking about. Oklahoma, $400 million to get with a, to get designation. Kentucky, and I think several of you have been there recently, was somewhere between $200 to $300 million. Kansas, of which I have some knowledge of, they invested somewhere between $300 to $500 million. So let's look at Kansas for a second. What did that do for Kansas? So expertise close to home. The patients didn't have to travel out of state. 350 cancer researchers, 150 disease-specific cancer doctors, 25,000 people enrolled in their trials since 2010. And then in terms of the research impact, $500 million in federal research funding in the past, since 2007, $2.5 billion to the economy and over 4,000 jobs. So you can see that having this really has a major impact on the state. So this is just a simple house, and I'll conclude with this in terms of an overall vision. Again, we want to call this the Louisiana Cancer Center. It's meant to serve every part of our state, urban, rural, rich, poor, everyone. So it's not an LSU cancer center, it's the Louisiana Cancer Center. And I think this will be a transformative vision that will really distinguish us nationally. In terms of a general theme, I said reduce the cancer burden inequities in Louisiana and beyond through discovery, improved access and delivery, and collaboration. And we want this to be a statewide effort, and we will build those strategic relationships over time as this grows. In terms of the pillars, it's research, clinical trials, community outreach, cancer training and education. And again, underscoring this foundation is strong leadership, governance, and a strategic plan. And some of the areas that we might focus on in the middle section of this figure, health inequities, obesity metabolism, cancer, obviously a strength of Pennington, viruses, and that's obviously a strength of Streport in her own, to immunology, and cancer prevention and control. So I conclude with that. I thank really President Tate for his vision. I hope this answers some of your questions. Again, it's meant to be just like a primer in terms of what this means and the impact it can have to the state. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Just a rationale. Thank you, first of all, for arranging the presentation on this very important matter. Thank you, sir, for the presentation, Dr. Nelson. Appreciate you wanting to provide some context from last week or whenever we received a large gift. It's a blur now. The realities are, we had to make some decisions. In DC, I talked to a few of you about the decisions that we made. Going backwards, if you look at the situation of NCI in the consortium strategy, I, I analogize it as a, in a football game. Imagine if you were on the 10-yard line at Tiger Stadium and the goal is right in front of you, and you ran four straight trick plays. Nobody would be really happy in the stands because they would want you to hand the ball off at least twice to see if you can get some yardage, right? See if you can move, move this thing forward. The consortium strategy is like a trick play, run four straight times. You're not going to, you're not going to get NCI. No matter how good you are, you're not going to get it because they've already predetermined that that trick play not going to work in that Madden game. Okay? So what we've had to do is to make a decision about how we were going to go forward. And the decision we made was simple. We're going to go with the strategy of using our hospital setup in New Orleans as the group that will get the handoff for four straight plays. While we're doing that and trying to move the needle on that front, we will also have an agreement with our other colleagues within the system for MOUs and the like so that when we get the second round of the play, when we get the ball again to reapply, they will all be knit, knitted into it and will have a wide swath of a network. So there will ultimately be a consortium, but you can't do it in the way that had been done in the past. Some of the gifts that have been given will help us knit together our system. So we will use the research money not only to enhance the research in New Orleans, but to enhance research throughout the LSU system with respect to cancer. And the more we work together in terms of raising that research needle in a collective fashion, the greater the likelihood is after four handoffs, we will make it over the finish line or get the touchdown. And then at that time we renew, if we're all working together, it will be very, very strong collective action. So that's the game plan for this, and you've already seen what the numbers look like when you're successful at it at other places.
We have the same potential to do that, we just have to run the ball up the middle. So I want to thank you, Dr. Nelson, for agreeing to be the, if you will, I don't know if you're going to call yourself the quarterback right now, you want to, you want to be the fullback, but you're going to get the ball, and you're going to get a chance to call some plays, and we're going to have to be the supportive team to make sure that they get across the finish line.
Yeah, let me say one thing, well, thank you for that presentation, thank you for your vision, and thank the board for their vision, is it's critically important that we build those relationships now. Because again, when the site visitors come to visit us in terms of the review, they're going to see that, what have I done with Shreveport? What have we done with Pennington? Have we written grants together? Have we done research together? Have we written papers together? So they want to, you know, it's not just on paper, they want to see that we're truly working together. So just like you said, President Tate, those dollars are essential to help build those relationships and those collaborations. But this clearly is a vision that we can realize. And to me, this is like the Superdome, this is like the Causeway, this is like a major thing that will transform Louisiana if we can really get this done.
And I would add finally, and then I will yield my time, that we didn't mention in this context agriculture. I see no way that we do this in a way that's scalable without actually thinking about how extension is engaged with this in terms of prevention, as well as engaging with agriculture in terms of the science related to our bodies.
Right.
And so I think we've got to figure out a way to integrate the totality of our enterprise because that is our strategic advantage over other folks as we're in this race to save lives here, but also to take this great science and apply it in other venues.
Right. Well, all those things make us stronger, but the only thing I would like to emphasize, and perhaps my tenure in charge of this will be short-lived, is that you have to focus initially, you know, because when those reviewers come, they want to know, because I've done this several times, they want to know that you have a clear vision. But that vision doesn't exclude anyone. What happens is your vision becomes larger, and you become more, and again, it's the strength of LSU and the breadth of LSU that makes us unique. I got a letter from the director of all the cancer programs in the United States who identified LSU as being the most likely, you know, entity to apply for this. I mean, we're in a very, very good position. All I'm trying to say is that you can't do everything at once, you have to build it strategically. But I count on every one of the institutions that makes LSU what it is today, and I've been here thirty-seven years, so that's a long time. I know many of you, and we've worked together, and I plan to make sure that we build on all of the strengths of LSU, but we want to make sure that when these reviewers come, they can see that we're focused, that we're actually delivering what we said we're going to do, and then build on our successes. And again, agriculture together with Pennington is key to all this. One of the central themes for us will be obesity and cancer, which is a very hot field. So, yes, sir.
Mr. Morris has a question.
Uh, Dr. Tate, could you go back through the timeline, or maybe Dr. Nelson?
How much money can you raise and how fast can you do it? The timeline is dependent on money.
Right.
This is a money business.
That's right.
So, you know, when people ask me about the timeline, you do the numbers, he said six million dollars of current funding. So you have to maintain that six million dollars, which is a non-trivial activity.
Right.
And then he wants to double it. So ask how many investigators does he have who actually can bring in NIH dollars or National Cancer Institute dollars at five hundred thousand to a million a pop? You start multiplying it out, how fast can you get it? Think NIL, we just talked about NIL. How many people can we get in the transfer portal who do cancer research that will be willing to bring their grants to LSU? Or how many can we develop bringing in as assistant professors who are going to hit, hit it and get the big grants? That's the scope and scale, that's the timeline, because once you hit the threshold with respect to funding, you're good. Now, the winning teams go out and buy outstanding people. It's really that simple.
Correct.
How many people can we buy? So those gifts that we receive, that's, that's a huge deal in going into the transfer portal and going to get that star quarterback who does cancer research, or that star, that star gymnast who does cancer research. So I, I'm using those as an analogy, but it's the same exact game. And so the folks that we're trying to get them from, when we go off, make an offer, they're going to say, hey, we'll add fifteen percent, stay here.
Right.
And you're in that kind of game until you can get to that twelve, to that twelve million. So we can't raise enough money fast enough for this. And that's the time horizon we're on. He said five to seven years. That means I need, I need to spend ninety percent of my time on the road raising money because we'd have to raise a hundred, two hundred million dollars. You saw what these other folks raised. We're not in that game yet. We're getting close. We, our appetite should be wet, but we've got to raise a lot more money.
So just to recruit one NIH R01-funded cancer researcher today, because everybody's trying to get these people because other places are trying to get NCI as well, including our neighbors. I mean, you can ask my colleagues right here, it'll cost for one person, one, one grant will cost somewhere between eight hundred to a million dollars over a couple of years. And then remember, once you are R01-funded, unless you have a long track record, the likelihood of you getting refunded is only about forty percent. So you have to realize that some of the people that you've funded now will lose their funding transiently as well. So it's a big commitment, and I'm very glad that President Tate's going to be on the road ninety percent of his time raising money for us. I'm very appreciative, sir.
So, Mr. President, Mr. President, eight thousand, I mean, madam, yeah.
Mr. Temple.
Yeah. So, so, Mr. President, this gentleman, Dr. Nelson, mentioned eight thousand people leaving Louisiana to go to other places, to Texas or?
Yes, sir.
You said eighty or eight?
Eight thousand. Six to eight thousand, two years ago.
Let's just say eight thousand. So, Mr. President, or Mr. Nelson, Dr. Nelson, how much money did they take with them? What did it cost to treat? Do you have any guesstimation on what the average cost it is to treat a cancer patient? Because those are the numbers that are leaving Louisiana. Those are the real numbers. It's all about the money. So the real numbers is like, what are we allowing to be drained out? I'm just asking a question.
Well, I can tell you it'd be hundreds of thousands of dollars per patient based upon their diagnosis, hundreds of thousands. So, yes, so, so indeed, I've also approached some of the insurance companies in, in this state to talk about different ways that we can work together for exactly the point you bring up. If we could bring these people back, that also maybe diagnose them earlier, get to them better earlier, that would decrease their costs. So we're engaging with them as well to see if they might be interested in working with us.
And I would add to that.
And I know that Pennington has done that before in terms of their programs with obesity and things like that, in terms of decreasing the cost in diagnosing early.
Not to mention the economic impact on Louisiana for time lost from work.
Right.
When not just the patient has to leave, but a caregiver has to.
Family and everyone else.
And being from West Louisiana and a rural part of the state, everyone goes to Texas there.
Right.
And fortunately, some now, we see some coming back with their prescribed treatment, being able to access it in our local hospitals, but still for, you know, the impact is tremendous. You know, childcare, missed work, the travel, and all those dollars leaving Louisiana. It's an excellent point, Mr. Temple.
Ms. Warren.
Yeah, Mr. Damp.
And, and not only the economic impact, which is obviously substantial, these are folks in a pretty tough spot, and their families are in a tough spot.
Right.
And so to be able to stay home and deal with your loved one emotionally, and, and that helps the patient, helps the family, so it's, it's, the dollars and cents, I have no doubt, are significant.
Right, very good point.
But there's the, the emotional component.
Because many times what happens is the family has to move to MD Anderson for a month or two while they're undergoing investigation.
And nobody wants to live in a hotel for a month when they can be at home, it's just...
Yeah. No, so the costs are huge across. And again, I don't want to take up too much of your time, you know, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions, and we'll go into more depth about specifics whenever, you know, Mr. Sarns or anyone else thinks appropriate.
The other thing, Robert, to add on to that, is the countless number of people that won't have access to it at any place. The state is full of people that are diagnosed with cancer that doesn't have the money or gas to get to any cancer center.
Right.
So having that designation and that economic back in here will not only provide convenience, emotional for people, so they don't have to travel, it's going to give access to people that don't have it now.
Right. One of the things, you know, Senator Cassidy was my resident. So one of the things I talked to Bill about before, early on with this, is again, and one of the things that he thinks is very important is this sort of urban-rural divide. Yeah, we want to make sure that we have the mechanisms and procedures and policies in place so that we can reach the people that you're specifically talking about. So health disparities, the urban-rural divide, actually are two of the strengths that we bring to this application, which the NCI would like us to address. So, very good point, sir.
Any further comments or questions? Thank you so much, Dr. Nelson. I think, I think we are on the precipice of really moving Louisiana forward in a whole new direction and combined with all our partners, with the work going on at Pennington, with the work going on in Shreveport, to see this finally coming to fruition. I know in my four years on the board, we've been discussing it, we've had Senator Cassidy here for presentations. I know President Gallagher had been personally affected by cancer, he was committed to it. President Alexander had been personally affected by cancer, he was committed to it. But we are really seeing the force behind this now, and congratulations to everyone. This is, this is tremendous, and I do look forward to the day that we are talking, Mr. LaBord, about the nutrition component of this and how, as we saw in Kentucky last week, how that is the basis of our lifestyle in Louisiana, and we can really begin to change the narrative, so, on all our health disparities. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
If there's no objection, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the committee.
So moved.
Second. Hearing no objection, committee's adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Warner. And thank you, Dr. Nelson, very much. This is the exact type of presentation I was hoping we would get, and we're going to have you back, and we were able to talk more specifics. And I can tell you that we are completely and fully committed to achieving NCI designation. This university is one hundred percent in support of those efforts, and we're looking for ways to work collaboratively with all the entities within the LSU universe to, to achieve that. So thank you very much, Dr. Nelson.
Thank you.
Ms. Supervisor Armentor, would you convene the academic committee?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Griffith, would you please call the academic committee, roll.
Ms. Armentor.
Here.
Ms. Morrow.
Here.
Ms. Aguilera.
Here.
Mr. Damp.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Woods.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Chairman is informed.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm happy to tell you that we have many timely and interesting items on our agenda today. We're going to call on Dr. Matt Lee to tell us about the first of them. Dr. Lee.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, everyone. The first agenda item is a request from LSU Health Science Center Shreveport for a continued designation as the Center of Research Excellence for the Center for Emerging Viral Threats. This was initially authorized for one year by the Board of Regents in December of 2020. LSU Health Shreveport would now like to request a full five-year continued designation. The Center for Emerging Viral Threats' mission is to engage in multidisciplinary, basic, and translational research on infectious agents, to provide surveillance and detection for current and future viral threats, to provide cutting-edge diagnostics and access to national clinical trials, and to educate physicians, scientists, and the community about prevention, treatment, and the science of viral diseases. This center has been extraordinarily productive. Over five hundred thousand diagnostic tests have been conducted, with the lab processing tests from sixty-two of the sixty-four parishes in Louisiana. It remains the top submitter of Louisiana sequences to the Global Repository for Gene Sequencing. The proposed operating budget per year is approximately four million dollars, derived from the project earnings of institutional support, foundation funding, philanthropic support, and the NIH Center of Biomedical Research Excellence Grant. Center-affiliated faculty to date have also submitted an aggregate total of approximately forty-nine million dollars in related proposals. This, the center's lab also has entered into a number of engagements with state parish and other local entities to provide services for a fee. All costs associated with operating the center will be covered by current and future revenues. In short, this is a tremendous center that is poised to become a national and international beacon for the study and diagnosis of acute and chronic viral diseases. Thank you for your consideration of this item.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to recommend the proposal as presented?
So moved.
Second? Any objection? Without objection, it is approved. Dr. Lee, let's go to the next, number two.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is another request from LSU Health Science Center Shreveport to establish a PhD in pathology and translational pathobiology. The primary goal of this program is to train and develop students into independent scientists capable of pursuing a diverse range of careers. The graduates from this program will have the capability to explain the mechanisms and origins of human disease at the molecular, cellular, and organismal level, have the opportunity to translate mechanistic insights gained at the bench to clinically relevant applications, and communicate scientific topics effectively across a variety of communities. The job market for highly skilled individuals with molecular pathology experience extends into a wide variety of sectors such as the academic, biotech, government, and public health. By establishing a new PhD program in this area, LSU Health Science Center Shreveport will fill a currently unmet need for translational pathology research within the state of Louisiana and continue to build the clinical and biomedical research workforce in our region. The Department of Pathology anticipates recruiting two to four new students per year into this program, and it is expected that costs for the first five years will not exceed total annual revenue. Thank you for your consideration of this item.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion to recommend the proposal as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any, any objection? Without objection, the, number two is approved. Dr. Lee, go to, go to number three.
Yes, sir. In keeping with our theme on health, the next item is from LSU Shreveport to establish a Bachelor of Science in Exercise Science and Environmental Physiology. Students in this program will be prepared to immediately work in the exercise and fitness industry, coaching, operational and occupational physiology in the US Navy and Air Force, and careers specializing in training and educating firefighters, law enforcement, hazmat, bomb disposal, and occupations engaged in flight in the area of environmental physiology. In this program, students will be able to use LSU Shreveport's new environmental atmospheric chamber to test human subjects in different environmental conditions that mimic conditions in the field. In addition, students will use state-of-the-art technology in the newly developed cyber co-laboratory. While several programs in Louisiana offer degrees related to exercise science, no programs in the United States specialize in the novel and emerging field of environmental physiology pertaining to human performance. Job-related outlook for exercise physiologists in related disciplines are projected to grow thirteen percent over the next ten years. The expected tuition revenues for each year is more than enough to cover the minimal costs associated with fielding this program. Thank you for your consideration.
Ladies and gentlemen, are there any questions? Is there a motion to recommend the proposal as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Aguilera, seconds. Are there any objections? Without objection, it is approved. Let's go to the next item, Dr. Lee.
Yes, sir. The next item is a request from the LSU Health Science Center Shreveport to establish a Bachelor of Science in Cardiovascular Technology. The purpose of this program is to prepare students to work side by side with interventional cardiologists to assist in the diagnosis and treatment of cardiovascular disease. This program will provide students with the latest training required to assist in cardiac and peripheral catheterization. Graduates will also be trained to work with cardiologists, cardiovascular nurses, and other highly skilled healthcare specialists to perform sophisticated tests to assist with diagnosis and allow the qualification and quantification of cardiac disorders. The proposed program will be mostly self-sustaining with minimal need for additional support during the initial five years. The program will not impact the allocation of existing departmental funds, and all expenditures will be paid by the tuition revenue in shared partnership with the Department of Medicine. Thank you for your consideration.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion to recommend the proposal?
Motion.
Second.
And, Ms. Warren, let me, let me see, second. Any objection? Without objection, it is passed. Number five, Dr. Lee.
Yes, sir. The fifth item is from LSU A&amp;M, and this is a request for a five-year continued authorization for the Transformational Technology and Cyber Research Center. This center was initially granted conditional approval by the Board of Regents in 2015, and it was subsequently granted a full five-year approval in 2016. The Transformational Technology and Cyber Research Center is a research unit under the Office of Research and Economic Development, and it is charged with expanding LSU's research, funding, and partnership portfolio in the areas of cybersecurity, intelligence, defense, and disaster management. With its ability to build partnerships with industry and state and federal entities, the center serves as both a connection point for the research enterprise and a facilitator of cyber-related workforce initiatives. The center's novel approaches to talent development are focused on producing exceptionally prepared and employable prepared and employable graduates fluent in cyber forensic and incident response. The LSU graduates will be positioned to respond to cyber threats in any sector and help Louisiana not only reduce its cyber workforce gap but also improve its security posture. Through its existing ecosystem of world-class faculty, talent, support, and renewed institutional commitment, the center is committed to transitioning its model from small, short-term internal and governmental contracts to long-term strategic public-private partnerships to advance cyber practice. The center has generated just over $4 million in external-sponsored research agreements and was instrumental in securing an additional $31 million in funding for partner organizations. All costs for the five years renewal will be covered by state and federal grants and institutional restricted funds. Thank you for your consideration of this item.
And ladies and gentlemen, are there any questions on number, number five? Is there a motion to recommend the proposal?
So moved.
Second.
And any objection? Without objection, the number five is also approved. Dr. Lee, would you take on the consent agenda, please?
Yes, sir. For the consent agenda, I'll be presenting the consent agenda items by topic, and I'd like to begin with two requests from LSU A&amp;M and one from LSU Shreveport to change degree titles. So, these are existing degree programs that we're simply revising the title. These changes are to more appropriately describe the actual programs. The Bachelor of Science in Learning Experience and Instructional Design, and the Bachelor of Arts in Art and Design at LSU, and the Bachelor of Science in Public Health from LSU Shreveport. We also have a request to establish the following endowed professorships. From LSU A&amp;M, we have the U.J. LaGrange Endowed Professorship in Accounting, number 12, the Charles M. Smith Medical Endowed Professorship, the Hannah Lor and Johannes Storrs Professorship in Pathobiological Sciences. Those are for LSU A&amp;M. For LSU Health Sciences Center New Orleans, we have the AmeriHealth Mercy General Russell L. Honore Professorship in the School of Public Health, the Lori Whited Lacoste Professorship in Clinical and Trauma Surgery in the Department of Surgery, and a Richard Robichaud Professorship, and the Sarah Deltramont, M.D. Professorship, and the Chris Mandrie, M.D. Professorship in Medical Medicine. And those are for the Health Science Center New Orleans. For LSU Alexandria, we have the LSU A Endowed Professorship in Experiential Excellence. For the LSU Ag Center, we have three. The Louisiana Farm Bureau Professorship in Agricultural Policy, I, the Louisiana Farm Bureau Professorship in Ag Policy, II, and the Durwood Joseph Newton Professorship in Sugarcane Variety Development. Next, we have a request from LSU Health New Orleans to establish three endowed Superior Graduate Student Scholarships. The Nursing School Superior Graduate Scholarship, the Hanson Scholarship and Nursing Superior Graduate Scholarship in the School of Nursing, and the Doctors Tricia Paulson and Tom Paulson Scholarship Fund in the LSU School of Medicine. In addition, we have a request from LSU Shreveport to enhance the Dalton Woods Endowed Professorship in Teaching and the Dalton Sugarwoods Endowed First Generation Scholarship. Then finally, and I think most notably here, we have a request from LSU A&amp;M to award a posthumous degree to Ms. Courtney Lynn Kendall. Ms. Kendall was enrolled in her first, in her final semester of the Bachelor of Science in Nutrition and Food Sciences Degree Program during her untimely passing. The faculty and director of the program, the dean, and the administration request that Ms. Kendall be awarded the Bachelor of Science in Nutrition and Food Sciences with a dietetic concentration posthumously, having no doubt that she would have completed all program requirements in good standing. Thank you for your consideration of consent agenda items, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to recommend the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, can I make just a comment on the, uh?
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Woods.
Please do.
They, he was former board member and is deceased, but their son, Mike Woods, very active in Shreveport, LSU Foundation. So, their legacy is continuing on and so important at the LSU, and we want to just recognize it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Other comments or questions? Is there a motion to recommend the consent agenda?
So moved.
Valencia and Monica, thank you. Any objection? And without objection, the consent agenda is passed. Is there a motion to adjourn the academic committee? McCullough and Pat, with no objection, the committee is adjourned. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Armentor, and thank you, Dr. Lee, for your presentation, and I'm very excited at the number of endowed scholarships and professorships that we are having at LSU. This is fantastic. People of Louisiana want to invest in us, and I think that is a tremendous development and a big victory for LSU. Supervisor Morrow, would you convene the property and facilities?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Griffith, please call the roll.
Ms. Morrow?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Aaronson? Mr. Damp?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Woods? Mrs. Zuschler? Mr. Chairman has a form.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis, will you please present the items?
Yes, sir, Ms. Morrow. Good afternoon. We have two items. First is a request from the LSU Ag Center for the lease of property at the Rose Pine Research Station in Vernon Parish. This property to be leased is approximately 640 acres, at, 624 acres, I'm sorry, at the Rose Pine Research Center. It would be a 15-year lease. It would go out for bid. This property has previously been leased. It was leased for 10 years, and this new lease would allow for additional funding for the Ag Center for operations. When it was leased for the prior 10 years, it was leased for cattle farming. There's already been interest expressed, and in addition to this, if there is interest in the sublease of the buildings that are there, that would bring in additional revenue for the Ag Center. Mr. LaBord is here if there are additional questions for the Ag Center regarding the lease.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What was the previous payment on the 10-year lease?
Mr. LaBord, do you or Mr. Grunwald have that information? I should say Hampton Grunwald was also here.
If you'll give me 30 seconds, I'll get an answer. That is the only thing I don't have.
You leasing it by the acre?
Yes, sir. These are done by the acre. This was initially done about 10 years ago as a result of budget reductions. We closed four research stations, and this is one of the ones that we terminated operations at. We have since, in the last three months, moved our Beauregard Extension Office to the Vernon Parish, to this office in Vernon Parish. So, we, we are using the buildings at this point. Kim, if you want to skip to the next one, I'm waiting on the answer.
We can move forward, then the next?
All right. We'll come back to this item. The next item is the update on utilities, modernization initiative.
So, as of, I think this project has been ongoing for a number of years, but we have finally closed on the utilities modernization initiative. There have been a series of briefings for different members of the board over the past week. The actual financial close took place last week, and the president actually signed the paperwork on today's Thursday. Was that Monday?
It was signed yesterday.
Yesterday. This week is thrown off with the holiday in the middle of the week. The all-in cost of the modernization remains $115.2 million. The locked-in interest rate is 3.73%, which is just slightly over the 3.7% that was previously presented to the board. There was a range presented to the board of 3.3% to 3.7%. With fluctuations in the market, the interest rate actually ended up being 3.73%. That was the rate of the U.S. Treasury as of 2/24, which is the date that we received the bids. We are still expecting to have minimum annual savings of $1.5 million. Back in October, when this project was presented to the board, the projected savings was $1.9 million annually, but the total savings is going to be $144 million, which is just over, about 6.7 million over the 137 million that was presented to the board in October. So, the savings will still be in excess of what was presented in October, and the net present value of those savings is approximately $69.8 million. With financial close, construction is expected to start in June. There will be three primary locations for construction, the main powerhouse, Highland Utility Plant, and the Distribution Center. Construction would end June 2024, and we do have, I know everyone was just in that presentation on the P3 audit process. There is a structure in place to have performance audits. There is, there would have been $2.5 million coming back to LSU at financial close. Instead, $2.4 million of that is actually coming to KPMG to then be transferred to CSRS for performance monitoring to ensure that we are actually receiving the cost savings that were projected when this project came in, so to make sure that Centrio is giving us the utility savings that we anticipated. So, we will have some performance measures to look at and track, and CSRS is the contractor that is being brought in to make sure that those cost savings are being monitored. So, since that was a discussion in our last risk management briefing, I wanted to let the board know that that is something that is a part of this contract with KPMG for the ongoing monitoring to make sure that we are getting the performance that we're anticipating and the cost savings. So, that is the update on utility project.
Any, any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a comment. I'd like to thank Mr. Brown and our illustrious attorney. They worked very hard on this project, and they need to be complimented. It was a lot of hard work, and I really do appreciate the work y'all did, because it's been a long process.
Mr. Mallett, we had a whole team back there, if they'd raise their hands, that, hi, guys, that, that helped us put this together.
Well, they did a good job.
Mr. Chairman, I have one quick question. Mr. Blossom, what was the, the part you just talked about, the two, two and a half million dollars, or, what was that, going to KPMG to pay somebody, CR, what?
So, $2.5 million would have come to LSU at financial close. Instead of coming to LSU directly, it's going to be retained by KPMG and be paid to CSRS, CSRS being the local company here, and they are structured to monitor the work that Centrio is doing to ensure that the cost savings that are a part of the contract, the measurements that are put in place in that contract are in fact being met.
So, we didn't get the 2.5. We gave it to KPMG to pay?
Well, we're, we're getting the benefit of?
We're getting, we got to monitor, I understand.
Correct.
That's not part of KPMG's fee, right?
No.
They're just writing?
They're just writing the check.
Okay.
Because they're handling the financial closing, so they're retaining it and sending it to?
Okay, thank you.
CSRS. So, we'll get the, the difference of that $100,000.
Whatever, just, I didn't know if that was on top of their fee that they've already collected in this proceeding.
No, no, they're just handling the transfer of that to CSRS.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Let's go back to the first item. That's a request from the LSU Agricultural Center for the lease of property of Rose Pine Research Station in Vernon Parish.
The previous lease was $2,100 per year for the term of the contract.
For the whole 600 acres?
Yes, sir. Per year.
I know. That's low.
It, it is done through a public bid, and it, it saves us those costs for maintenance.
I get, I get that, but I mean, that's fine. That's, that's interesting.
Do we, excuse me?
Yes.
Do we know the price per acre, commercial price per acre in southern Vernon Parish?
That, that would?
Market, the market price?
There's, there's a range. That can vary anywhere from $15 an acre to $100 an acre depending on topography, depending on the need in the area, so it, it is a range.
Mr. LaBord, you?
Yes.
You, we've got to say something?
No, that's, my, my comment is that this is, this is really pine-forested area and upland sandy soils, and so it's not comparable to the bottom land that we typically think of farming or coastal plants.
Well, I've been there. It's a pretty nice farm. That's $3 an acre, and cattle are very high in price, and running cattle on the 600 acres farm at $3 an acre is not a bad deal.
All right. Any other comments? The motion to recommend the proposal as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any opposition to the motion? The motion is adopted. Ms. Griffith, is that all of mine, or this seems to be?
Yeah, the capital outlay item.
Oh, okay. The next item, Ms. Lewis, would you present that?
Yes, Ms. Morrow. We have two requests for amendments to the capital outlay budget as previously presented. The first request is an amendment to the capital outlay that was previously presented for the LSU Alexandria Student Success Center. So, the Student Success Center was previously approved for capital outlay. The total cost for that project is, well, it was $10 million. Due to the increase in the cost of construction, it is now going to cost $12.9 million. The rule is if it exceeds 20%, the threshold of the increased cost exceeds 20%, it has to come back to this board for approval. That $2.9 million increase is 29% over, so we have to have approval of the board to go back to increase the capital outlay request. This $2.9 million is, of course, the result of two years of inflation in the cost and where we are with that project. The Student Success Center is going to have space for recruitment, admissions, financial aid, scholarships, academic advising, and first-year experience. Mr. Correll is here if there are specific questions about the Student Success Center, but without this increase, they will have to cut 5,000 square foot of space out of the project, and he would request that we not do that.
Okay.
And then the second capital outlay piece is a name change of the library so that it would no longer be called just the library, but specifically would be called the Louisiana State University Library when this capital outlay request is submitted to the legislature. This request has already been submitted to the Division of Administration, Office of Facility Planning, as well as to the Board of Regents for their amendment to let them know that we would be making this request to the board to add that change made because the capital outlay budget and the bill itself are being drafted. So, with the board's approval, we would also make that request to them officially.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Are there any questions on either of these two issues that we discussed? Hearing none. Is there a motion to recommend the proposal as presented?
So moved.
Move by Mr. Mallett?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Damp. Do we have any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is adopted. Is there a motion to adjourn the committee?
So moved.
Mr. Mallett, seconded. Mr. Brown? With no objection, the committee is adjourned. Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Ms. Morrow.
Thank you, Supervisor Morrow, and thank you, Ms. Lewis. Supervisor Temple, would you convene the athletic committee?
Fellow supervisor, the athletic committee. I'd like to have a roll call.
Okay. Mr. Temple?
Here.
Mr. Blossman?
Here.
Mr. Armentor?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Damp?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Ms. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Chandler has a form.
Thank you, ma'am. First item that we'd like to do is ask Mr. Woodward to bring us pertinent information. Mr. Woodward?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members. Welcome, and good seeing you guys. I come to you today to finish out the proposals for Coach Kelly's on-the-field staff, which is seven excellent, I would even say stupendous.
is seven excellent, I would even say stupendous assistant coaches to lead the Tigers going forward, and he has been very diligent and very, I should say, organized in how he put his staff together. It's a very impressive staff, and I'm happy to answer any of the questions about the seven term sheets in front of you. It's a very competitive package, one of the top in the country, if not the top currently. They jump from moment to moment. Val, as I can see you smiling, we all know so well, and, but we think it's very commensurate for where we are in the market, which is near the top, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Mr. Temple? All right. I have a motion to accept. Report, please.
No move.
It's been moved by Ms. Warner, seconded by Mr. Blossman. Another item we have before us is to make an amendment to the resolution.
I didn't have a call.
Having an amendment to one of the coaches who was approved last month, we'd like to change that to insert Coach Cooks. So I'd like to have an amendment to that item.
No move.
Moved by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Seconded by, who have a second?
Valencia.
Valencia has given us a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's have it, sort of. Yeah, we'd like to have a vote on the underlying resolution. Have someone bring it forward.
It's our move to second, just to ask them all.
Yeah, all in favor. All in favor. Aye, it's have it, it's sort of. I'd like to have a motion to adjourn of a...
Second.
Moved by Mr. Brown, seconded.
Second.
All of it. All those in favor, let it be known by a show of hands.
He's keeping us awake.
Sort of. Motion carries.
Thank you Supervisor Temple.
All right.
Thank you, Scott, very much. It was great to see you today, and thank you for you and your staff and for the final discussion we had regarding NIL, and thank you for the work you do here. Without objection, we're going to recess the committees and reconvene the board meeting at 8:00 a.m. tomorrow.